Okay, good evening and welcome to the Atoma City Council meeting. It's 5:30, so I'm gonna call our meeting to order. And if everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item on our agenda tonight is something that I'm very excited about, and I think that's why we have so many people here tonight. We are going to swear in our new Atoma Youth City Council members. There are seven students at Atoma High School that have been selected to serve on the Atoma City Youth Council this next year. And this was kind of a joint venture between Councilwoman Galloway, Colby Striebe at Atoma High School, and myself. So before we actually have them come up and actually swear them into office, I'm gonna ask Councilman Galloway and Colby Striebe, if she'd like, to come out and just give a little brief background on how we got here.
Perfect.
Colby, wanna come up here?
I didn't know I was speaking. I'm surprising you. So first and foremost, I want to welcome all of you here on this monumental night. I think I speak for everyone that I could not be more excited that Atoma is leading the way in such a cool endeavor. We, Colby approached us and I can approach us about wanting to get the students more involved, and we jumped on that endeavor. If you know me, I am very big on youth deserve to have a voice that is not just heard, but that is acted upon. Youth are, we always hear that youth are our future. Well, youth can't be our future if we don't actually give them the voice and the platform to be our future. And that's truly what this Youth Council is about. We're excited to start it, and it's gonna be a really cool endeavor that the youth are truly going to create. We gave them the bones, now they're gonna build it up to what it needs to be. The last thing I'll say before I hand it over to Colby is, it's also really exciting because the state is watching us. They, there are councils out there, but there are not councils like this that truly are ingrained into the city. And we are excited to be the model to move forward with.
And we had nine applicants, and as Mayor Johnson said, we have seven youth that were... Sorry. We had nine applicants and we chose seven to be on this Youth Council, and they were all spectacular. I mean, it was really, really hard to narrow down the seven that we did choose. But we wanted to make sure that the youth that were chosen this time, that they could still be part of the committees and different events that were gonna be... or not we, the youth hopefully will be hosting in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, if we could have the seven students come forward for the actual swearing in. We've got service certificates to hand out and also have you sign your oath of office. Instead of having each one of you recite this totally on your own, we're gonna just do the first part where you go "I" in your name. And then when that's all done, then you'll recite the various sections together in the group the rest of the way through. So everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, so we'll start out with "I." Speak up loud so people can hear.
I, David.
You speak louder.
I, David.
Do your last name, too.
I, Isabel Hoffman.
Hi, Lauren, I'm here.
I, Jennifer.
I, David.
Hi, Freddie.
I, Arielle.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially,
to the best of my ability,
discharge all duties of the Atoma Youth City Council
as a member,
now and hereafter required by law.
You did it. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you very much. Very excited. Thank you very much.
Did you break it, Kara?
No.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, David. Congratulations, Eric. Isabella.
All to turn around.
Everybody who wants to turn around with your certificate, let's give them another great... And then if you would all come up here and sign your individual oath of office, we need that, we need that for your file.
There are now some of the paperwork, and you're gonna have to share some pens. Name of your thing? Is it blue?
I think the Youth City Council is planning on meeting twice a month, starting this next month, and I believe they're gonna meet at 3:30 the first and third Mondays of the month, which are the days before our regular city council meetings. So if they have anything that they want to bring to the attention of the city council, they'll be positioned to be able to do that. And we'll be meeting at the Depot Building. As Colby said, it was really hard to select who we put on the City Youth Council because they all had some fantastic and great ideas, and I'm really confident they're gonna do some really super things this next year and give a voice to the youth in our community. So, before we go further, we'd have everybody come back up here so we can take a quick picture of Kara and Colby and myself. And at city council, you guys wanna get down on this, too?
Let's go like in around it. I don't wanna be in the middle, y'all will be in the middle.
I get them back.
I'm tall, I'll get them back.
You're not tall. You gotta have to come in.
Act like you like each other.
You can come back here. We can get another row coming up.
Here, you have to go in the back, we're tall. Colby?
All right, Devon, you can come over here.
So then you might need to come in a little bit closer.
You guys can scooch in a little more.
Act like you like each other.
Can you get everybody?
Smile big. Parents, you got your pictures?
Keep, keep standing there.
Okay.
We got too much of the podium there.
We don't like podiums.
Wait, wait, we got one, we got one more over here, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now that we got the fun stuff over, now we're gonna get down to business. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the roles.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
I just wanted to note that there's a, on the consent agenda, that there's a, I work at any of those community colleges, be transparent, I do work there. However, that has nothing to do with me, my department, or anybody, so I'll vote on it, I vote yes. I just wanted to put that out there, that has nothing to do with me.
Okay, the next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item, the city administrators' report to council, the citizens of Atoma, so I'll turn it over to Phil Ratner, city administrator.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. We had the one item on here, was the status of financial reporting of city funds. Jessica is not here tonight. I believe we talked last time about where we're at and that things were getting caught up. Also, with all of the reporting that was done in work sessions and everything else with budget, we have the final bit at the end of the meeting tonight. So I think we're on track with all of that, as well as with the audit, if we can get that all completed. The one thing though I did want to mention is, at the end of last meeting, before the work session part, there was a question about the FOIA request for W-2s. I didn't have all the detail at that meeting. I just remembered that when it was being reviewed, there was conversation with the city attorney as far as what information could be shared, should be shared. And the majority of the information that was requested was provided, and wages, and that is public record. I believe there are a number of entities that request that on an annual basis, and we publish that as well. In this particular case, there was a question about if all that information was presented. Looking back at what had been presented in the past, there was actually a couple additional pieces of information that were presented with that request. That has all been resolved. I spoke with Mr. Lazio, he was satisfied. City clerk was able to provide response back from the attorney, and everything was satisfied with that particular request. So just wanted to update that, and I was a question about bringing it up at the next meeting. There is no action for the council to take, and it's been resolved at this point. And that's all I get for today.
Does council have any questions for Phil? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is to ask if anyone in the room would like to comment tonight on any of our agenda items. We don't have any papers that have been filled out. There is some white sheets in that basket over there. If anybody does want to speak on any of tonight's agenda items, you need to complete one of those little white forms and bring it up here. Anybody plan on speaking on any agenda items tonight? I'll ask for later in the meeting if you want to speak on any non-agenda items, but for right now, this is just the agenda items that we're gonna be talking about tonight. Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward. We've got several public hearings, so I'm gonna turn it over to our city clerk.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property to Wilson B&amp;L LLC.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. I believe Philip Bergmeyer, our Public Works Director, is gonna present on this.
All right, so in order, thank you, Mayor. So in order to construct and maintain parts of the Albiety Roundabout, you're gonna see a bunch of easements and acquisitions and property swaps tonight. This particular property swap will be for the two red areas on this. So the city right now owns this red parcel on the north side of Albiety Road, and B&amp;L Wilson owns the property on the south side. We don't need the property on the north side for anything, there's no reason in the city to have it. We do need the property on the south side in order to outlet our storm sewer. We thought it was best rather than trying to purchase property from the owner to swap parcels with him or her and save the city the cost of having to acquire the land.
She was agreeable with that, right?
She was. So we're getting 4.41 acres on the south side of the road, American banks, then 0.24 acres on the north side. And they actually own the property just to the north of there, too, so it's adjacent to their property. And actually, we need the property on the south side of the area, so... I'll open up any questions you guys have.
Does the council have any questions for Philip? Since this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments that they would like to make regarding this issue? Philip?
Yes.
No money changing hands either way?
Not for the property, so we've had to pay for the title, like normal property, legal type fees, but we're not paying any money to B&amp;L, they're not paying any money to us.
That was my question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 27, 2024, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property to Wilson B&amp;L LLC. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 27, 2024.
Does there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing to review the environmental information document for state revolving fund loan and to make available to the public the contents of that document.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Philip Bergmeyer's gonna also present on this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So for Phase 8 Division 3, which for all of me that don't remember, is the green area on the left-hand map there. We are planning on giving an SRF loan for that. And as part of the process for getting SRF loan, we're required to have a public hearing on an environmental review that was conducted. The right-hand map, all the areas outlined in red around the streets, that's the areas that were reviewed as part of the environmental review. So the primary purpose of this is to discuss that environmental review. You know, again, this project for Division 3 will separate sewers in that green area, like I said before. It is listed on the intended use plan for SRF. The anticipated cost is $13.3 million. We are not anticipating any user rate increases for this project. It's intended to be funded with lost funds and not sewer fees. I got Randy Johnson with B&amp;K, they're the design engineers. They can answer any questions on this environmental review, they can spearhead it. Just wanted to be clear, too, there will be further hearings on this project. We'll have to have another hearing to actually apply for the SRF loan, depending when we do apply for one. And when the plans and specs are finished, we'll have to have another public hearing for the plans and specs for the specific project we're doing. So this is just step one of three public hearings we're eventually gonna have for this project. Did you want to say anything, Randy?
Good evening, Randy Johnson with B&amp;K Design Engineers. As Philip said, we've been working with the city, and some of you have probably seen several times. We've been doing this about 20 years, the sewer separation within the city. This is Phase 8 of 10 phases. Like Philip said, the first couple, 1 and 2, and then pretty much done with local funds. Division 3 is part of a plan that we developed three years ago. You know, submitted it to the in-house, you know, asked for their approval on all the, what we're doing on this. So we developed a plan and engineering report. So as part of that, they wanted us to do an environmental review. Done the environmental review, had the Corps of Engineers, endangered species, SHPO. Everybody's reviewed the documents. They have no significant findings or impacts or findings for this. So really, like Philip was saying, it's more or less just to abide by the NEPA, by the requirements of obtaining an SRF loan, we have to have an environmental review. And like Philip was saying, we'll be back for the loan application, and we'll be back for plans and specs. So, do you guys have any questions on that we could answer, or hear that?
Does the council have any questions for Philip or Randy?
What does SRF stand for?
It's a state revolving fund, so that is part of the federal monies that the state get to allow communities to get a pretty great rate, interest rate, and loan for this. It's usually typically a 20-year loan.
So I always have the question that people ask me, this is Phase 8 of 10 phases. When will this total sewer separation project tentatively be totally completed? Because I know you've been working on it for like 20 years. Is there any kind of target date out there in the future somewhere?
I believe, you know, 2030 is one date, and then 2035. There, we have like three more phases of this, or three more what we call divisions, because Phase 8 is already part of the city, so...
Phase 8 is Blake's Branch. The entire, the entirety of Blake's Branch from the Duane River up to just north of Pennsylvania, and then from there upstream towards, pretty much to the north side of town, all the way up to Gateway Drive, the industrial park. All that flows to a pump station by Grandview, which flows to Blake's Branch. So that entire...
So it's a whole area?
Yeah, 1,600 acres, I think.
Okay.
So that's Phase 8, is split up into different divisions to cover the whole area.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Philip or Randy? Since this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions they'd like to make? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 47, 2024, approving the environmental information document for state revolving fund loan for the Phase 8 Division 3 sewer separation project, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 47, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the South Milner Street reconstruction, Port of Field to Hand project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and here, Philip Bergmeyer's gonna report on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the picture to the right is a section of Milner Street, south of Mary. There's a Jefferson drainage ditch, you all know where that's at. So it starts at the Jefferson drainage ditch right here. It goes south to just, just past Hand. We're separating sewer in that area. Narrowing the street down, it's now really wide. I think there used to be some businesses in the area at one time. Businesses are no longer there to serve the public, so narrowing the street down, changing over to concrete, separate the sewer. The water main was already redone and moved out from under the existing, or the proposed street, so that's taken care of. This was designed by Garden Associates, but I'll take any questions that you guys might have on the design.
Any questions from council? Phil, when we re-lay the street, what will be the width of it? 22 feet or...
29. We're matching the existing road north of the, north of the drainage ditch.
Okay, very good. And, I guess that answers my question, thank you.
We're doing a little bit of improvements. Hand is pretty steep coming up to that street, so we're going back quite a ways. I think it's hard to see because it's all black and white. But we're going back about 100 or 150 feet on that street to try to make that a little bit more gentle, a bit inclined. Putting all new sidewalks in there as well, to, because the sidewalks are, they end up being like 15 feet away from the street, so we're bringing them back a little bit closer.
And, and as we've done the mask, we're not putting any sewer or water lines under the street so that we don't have to dig up a street to fix a water line?
Correct. So the sewer is in pretty good condition, we're not replacing the sanitary sewer there. The storm sewer used to flow to the sanitary sewer, so the new storm sewer is gonna be on the bottom of the sheeper, so on the east side of the road, and it's gonna be out from under the pavement.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 48, 2024, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the South Milner Street reconstruction project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 48, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the asphalt street repair program 2024.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Philip, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So this project, it's for, it sets up prices, so it's a, it's a set of prices so that when we go to overlay streets or do anything with asphalt streets, you have a price of what that'll cost depending on how many tons of asphalt are in there, how deep is the milling. Right now, we planned on overlaying East Main Street from Boston Park, approximately 1,000 feet east towards Ronham Avenue, or I'm sorry, towards Herman Avenue, and then Herman Avenue from Main Street north to Ramon. That does not, does not utilize the entire budget for street maintenance this year. We're holding some back, depending on what RagBri does. There might be streets added to this. We'll have a patch program come out that'll come out of these same funds. That hasn't been done yet, but we don't know where we need to allocate money for RagBri yet. We have areas in mind for that. So when you see the $750,000, that's the total budget for all of our contractual street maintenance for a year. The asphalt program will take part of that, and then the street patch will take up more, for another part of that as well.
Do you have any idea what part that you have planned to do, the overlays?
Yeah, so on...
What that takes dollar-wise?
About $300,000, maybe that area. We'll have roughly half the, a little more, roughly half the money left, let's look at this.
Good. Just for transparency, say for the public, how do you determine what other streets are going to get asphalt overlay on them?
So...
Is it the worst condition, or...
Not just the worst condition, so it's, it's, one is condition, the amount of traffic on the street makes a difference as well, the more traffic you have on the area of cars. Equal condition of street, 1,000 cars a day, we get priority of street with like 300 cars a day. We also take into account whether we're doing sewer separation there, so like, anything east of Jefferson right now, north of 4th Street, ain't getting touched, because we're gonna tear it up anyway in the next three, four, or five years. Even our street crews will go through there and they'll make it drivable, but we're not putting any permanent fixes in there, anything's gonna last more than five years, because we know we're gonna tear it up for sewer separation. So areas that have been separated get priority, traffic is priority, the condition makes a difference as well.
Thank you. Does any council members have any questions for Philip regarding this topic? That does not eliminate the patch program, so if we need to make patches?
Yeah, we plan on, on doing a patch program this year, too. Though it won't just be patches, but also replacing curb and gutters on some sections of the street as well, because our guys can do patches, but we like to put them on places where there's a lot of traffic control issues, because we can, they're always here. They can put a little concrete here, you know, they can do stuff in pieces on intersections. But like, long stretches is something that is the same, like a long stretch of curb and gutter, or like, a single street that has like five or six, seven, eight, 10 patches on it. That's something we wanna contract out, because we get more efficient use of our funds that way.
Where's the city at with getting the ADA cutouts for all those street sidewalk intersections?
I think we're, unless, except for like what we found on 2nd Street this year. Everywhere that we think needed sidewalk drops, we think has it. I don't know if it's like 3,000 or 3,500 drops we have over the state, if there's thousands of them. But we've mapped them out, and the ones that still have curbs there... there and not a smooth ramp, we think all of them are in areas that haven't separated yet with sewers, so we don't want to put new ramps up where we're going to separate sewers. So the north side has a lot of areas that don't have handicap ramps, but it's because the sewers are so combined.
Well, we also have a lot of neighbors and they don't even have sidewalks.
Yeah, and that's a whole other discussion that you guys might not want to have or you might want to have, I don't know. But those are ordered by city council to be built, so I can't build sidewalk routes out there.
Yeah. Council have any questions for Phillip? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number forty-nine, twenty twenty-four, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the asphalt street repair program, twenty twenty-four. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number forty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Albia Road North Quincy Avenue Roundabout Project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and Mr. Burtmeyer's still up here, so I guess you're going to do this one too.
I'm going to see. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a roundabout at the intersection of Quincy and Albia Road. It was awarded a traffic safety improvement program grant because of the high crash history at this intersection. It was awarded the maximum amount of possible for a grant, five hundred thousand dollars. This proposed traffic was intended to improve safety at the intersection for motorists and also for pedestrians. Budget will be received and opened on March thirteenth at two P M. The award recommendation will be sent to the city council meeting on March nineteenth or at a later date to term my staff. Funding is, the balance of the funding on top of the T S I P grant is from road use and loss. Cash balance, no, no funding for it.
Council have any questions for Phillip?
What's the remaining balance after the grant?
Ended up being more than I originally thought it was going to be. They have the estimate as six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for this roundabout. It was supposed to be constructed, I think we wanted to get it done last year, but we've been working on these minutes and property swaps and there's still a few more things that we see for that, but all the property has been, all these months have been signed now and that has been signed, so it's a matter of approving them here and making it forward to the project.
So how will the balance be funded?
That's what I said, the road use and loss.
Okay.
The fund balances.
Oh, what's the diameter of the roundabout?
I believe a hundred and five mile is the outside diameter. It's going to be a bigger one like it is at Albia and Waffle Tree Extension, not like, it's not going to be a small one like at Richmond and Albia or Richmond and Ferry, it'll be a, it'll be a bigger one with the truck apron on it and like the center being grass.
Thank you.
With just one lane, correct?
Just one lane, yes. No slip lanes, it'll be very similar to the one at Waffle Tree Extension and Albia Road.
Can you explain what loss is?
Local option sales tax is lost and then the road use is funded by gas taxes. So I think it kind of gets all put into the street construction fund, but the source of money for the street construction fund is those two funds, so.
Council have any other questions for Phillip? If not, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions that they'd like to raise on this topic? It's been quite pretty easy tonight. If not, I go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty, twenty twenty-four, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Albia Road North Quincy Avenue Roundabout Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number fifty, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thanks, Phil.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed six million dollars to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and I believe Phil Ratt is going to take this.
Yeah, thank you, honorable mayor. So the next three are all kind of tied together. I'm going to give a general overview, but then I'm going to address each of those in more specific terms for the, where they are more specific in nature. So in general, what we're talking about these next three is we're not asking the city council to actually bond for any specific projects tonight. In order for the city to be able to levy for debt service, including for projects that we haven't borrowed for yet, what we're looking at is what's called a pre-levy or basically we can't levy debt service unless there is a project or debt that has already been established. So one of the things we're doing here is continuing that process forward and asking in the final part here for the ability for that pre-levy. We talked about this in budget work sessions and looking at where we're at for debt service and the capital products that we're looking at, and so I said for each of these, there's more specific parts and I'll get into that, but in general terms, that's what we're doing. We will have future items or items in future meetings with specifics of projects, and so things that are listed here, we're not saying we're going to borrow for tonight, but it'll give us the ability to have that on the budget for this next year, at least the first year. If for some reason a project is removed down the road and not included, when we actually go out to bond for these, that will be removed and future years will be restructured as far as paying, so it's a very, just that first year is what we're looking at. And based on timing, we need to go through this process in order to be able to reserve that right to levy that for our budget next year. So looking at this first one here, the six million dollar obligation, this is for what's known as essential corporate purposes. This is a type of things such as street repair, construction, solid waste, sanitary sewer, waterworks, construction repair, equipping of public safety, nuisance abatement, and a number of other reasons that are covered under the specific Iowa code three eight four point two four three. So that is kind of what we're talking about here. Anything that is under essential corporate purposes, we can group together and there's not a threshold that we're bumping up against, that's why this one is so much larger than the next two. Now, specific projects we're looking at that were identified by staff and talked about in previous work sessions, looking at eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars towards demolition program. That is the properties throughout the city where we have gone through the abatement process and looked to demolish those. There's costs with all that, including legal fees and contracting the labor. This goes towards that and continuing that program. There was a request for a cemetery office maintenance building at one point eight seven five million dollars. That's in this part, continuing the cemetery paving, fifty thousand. Lighting for Trager and a couple parks was twenty thousand dollars. Police public safety cameras, access points, thirteen thousand. Police drones and accessories, nineteen five. Police bidirectional turning target standards, fifteen five. And there's a couple of other things in here as well, one of them being the fire vehicle that was approved earlier this year for nine hundred thousand, hazmat replacement vehicle, and two hundred and eighty thousand dollars towards downtown development projects. So all of that totaled was five point five eight million. The six million dollar authority provides a little bit of cushion for setting the authority and gives a little cushion if the borrowings, any of those projects were to go over a little bit. So for now, we're asking that we continue this process, that we were able to establish that pre-levy. Like I said, the fire truck that was approved for purchase earlier this year, at the very least, if we're looking at purchasing that, the pre-levy would cover our payments for that first year and things could be restructured down the road. So what we're looking at is at the earliest April, talking about the specifics of these projects and what we would include in the future bonding, those proceedings wouldn't be until the May or June, receiving the money up to the first of the year. And again, as a reminder, this is for a two-year borrowing, we're looking at not just the one year.
Council have any questions for Phillip?
Phil, you might mention when our year starts and ends.
Yes, so, yes, so the fiscal year is July one, start of July one, goes through June thirty, and that is why we're looking at the borrowing not being until our next fiscal year with July. However, we need to establish the budget and levy within the next few weeks here for the dollars that we'd be receiving for the next fiscal year starting July one.
Any other questions from council? If not, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make on this specific item? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-one, twenty twenty-four, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed six million dollar general obligation capital loan notes, E C P one. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number fifty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Move their recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed seven hundred thousand to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to city administrator Phil Ratt.
Okay, so again, this is very similar to the last one. This amount is much less, seven hundred thousand dollars. It's for general corporate purpose debt. Those are things not considered basic city services, facilities, facility improvements, and a number of other things that are identified in code. The specifics for this request are products that are tied to Bridgeview Center, items and improvements, including LED signage for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, roof repairs for forty thousand, combination oven for the kitchen at sixty thousand, general theater improvements at forty-five thousand, sear waterproofing and access seventy-five thousand, and ramp and stairs replacement at fifteen thousand. Total of all those is four hundred and twenty thousand, but the seven hundred thousand provides the maximum authority available under the general corporate purpose bond, so we can look to borrow up to that amount for those projects.
Council have any questions for Phillip?
I do. So I know we're not identifying what we're actually like, this is just too far on that too, but I go back to our last work session where we talked about how there were some things that were, some monies that were borrowed and just kind of sat there because projects didn't happen. If we borrow over this four twenty and like a huge cushion over, does that, are we going to run into the same concern that we've kind of identified that we've had because we have to move some monies around now because we're kind of coming up on that three year?
Yeah, man, that's, that's always a possibility, so we look at what projects could be included with that. Now, we're talking about roof repairs of the forty thousand, it could be that it's identified that there's more structural issue with the roof and it's going to cause a lot more than that to give that cushion, and just because we borrow those funds doesn't mean that we couldn't pay it back early if it's more than what we need, or once we get to that point of identifying the specific projects, we may be able to fine tune that, and there may be some other projects that we can group with the next item on there and all combined at seven hundred thousand instead of one point four million. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there any questions or comments from the audience? Scott, did you want to say anything about any of this?
I'm happy to answer your questions if they don't matter. It's all pretty self-explanatory. I think people need to remember that even though Bridgeview is a really nice facility, it's important that the city continue to maintain it, and it's almost twenty years old, so it's not uncommon that there's going to have to be some ongoing maintenance done on that building, and the longer you have those things to go unresolved, the more it costs you down the road, so I think it's good to be proactive and get some of these things done when they're not huge problems.
If there's no other questions from the audience, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-two, twenty twenty-four, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of notes not to exceed seven hundred thousand general obligation capital loan notes, G C P two. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number fifty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed seven hundred thousand to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to Phil Ratt, our city administrator.
Thank you. So somewhere to the last one, this again is for general corporate purpose debt, and we are not approving the specifics of these tonight just to continue the process forward. The items that we're looking at within this package are more I T and software related, except for one thing, so there's financial software we talked about previously at two hundred and fifty thousand. The one add-on in here is the south fire department floor replacement at ten thousand, and then we get back into I T stuff with an I T backup server replacement at thirty-two five, working with M C D fiber and connecting our various facilities at a hundred and eighty-three thousand, I T server two replacement, one fifty-five thousand, and I T tier two SAM purchase at nineteen thousand five hundred. That totals six hundred and fifty thousand, again, looking at that seven hundred thousand dollar authority for that debt cushion.
You've kind of talked about this before, but for some people maybe who are here at other councils, I mean, can you just briefly explain why it's important that the city's looking at upgrading their financial software platform in the future? Because that is kind of a big ticket item, but I think it's real important that the public understand why that's an important item.
Yeah, so one of the things, we have an older software program and it is limited within its capacity and capabilities. For example, it does not communicate or integrate with some of our other functions, our human resource information system, for example. So when payroll is cut for the two hundred plus employees across twenty different departments and functions, all of that then has to get coded into our financial software system, and so you have hundreds to, you know, thousand plus lines of code that have to be entered. It takes time to do all that and it increases the likelihood of an error when you're having to key in all of that stuff by hand, so this would save time. The other thing is the capabilities of financial software these days as far as reporting, as far as real-time data and being able to access that, project management, all of that, the capabilities are much more than what our current system is able to provide. It'll provide better, more timely information to the city council, to staff, to the public, and make sure that we're in a great financial position.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Phil regarding this item?
Phil, I think it's, if I'm not incorrect, the software that we're working with right now is well over twenty years old, and most people know software almost has to be upgraded every other year, so we've gone a long ways, it's time to do it.
And we have had some patches and upgrades, but within that software itself, I think it has reached some of its limitations.
Well, probably won't be two new years for it, probably won't even support it anymore.
Well, there is always that risk. Anyone has Microsoft or Apple products, it's every couple of years and there's, you can't get the same cords to charge up your phone now as you had four years ago.
Council have any other questions for Phil? If not, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions that they'd like to make regarding? make regarding this item? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 53, 2024, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of notes not to exceed 700,000 general obligation capital loan notes, GCP 3. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 53, 2024.
Move their recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 54, 2024, authorizing the issuance of 7.4 million general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2024, and levying a tax for the payment thereof. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 54, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move their recommendation.
Second.
Bill, was that you first?
That was Bill.
Yeah. And we've got second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the matter of a petition to reestablish and continue the downtown Etumwa self-supporting municipal improvement district, also known as SMIT.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to our Community Development Director, Zach Simonson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Chapter 386 of the Iowa Code provides for the development of districts where a tax is levied for improvements within that district. If such a district is established in downtown Etumwa, effective July 1, 2019, and that district is in its fifth and final year and due to expire, a timely petition was received which would seek to renew the district. The law requires the petition to reflect the signatures of at least 25% of the property owners by number, but also 25% of the owner, or the owners who represent at least 25% of the value in the proposed district as well. And staff reviewed the petition, and it appears to meet the initial requirement, exceeding both thresholds significantly. At the December 4 regular permanent zoning commission meeting, the commission was referred by the council to petition and did issue a report which is included, which recommends that the self-supporting municipal improvement district be renewed for a further seven years. Further public hearing notices were mailed to all property owners established with the proposed boundaries of the SMIT district and invited them to participate in this hearing tonight. This hearing is a requirement of the law, that we do have to have the hearing tonight, give the property owners an opportunity to provide input, and then we have to wait at least 30 days before we have a public hearing, or after the public hearing, before we consider an ordinance which would do any action related to establishing and continuing the SMIT. If approved, the properties in the district would pay an additional $1 per thousand in Zone 1, $2 per thousand in Zone 2, and $3 per thousand in Zone 3. Those funds would be used for projects that benefit the district as determined by a committee. The previous projects have included trash enclosures for businesses, or trash closures near the business district, the electric maintenance cart for Main Street Etumwa, dog waste bags and trash cans, ashtray replacement, support from the Business Builder Academy, and more. And Main Street Etumwa has some folks here that did want to speak about the work that's been done with the SMIT district.
Okay. Would you like to come forward individually or as a group? Don't be shy.
I'm Holly Burke, and I'm the current president of Main Street Etumwa. The petition did have over 43% of the property owners sign downtown and over 50% of the assessed value of the properties downtown. We've seen some great things come out of the fund so far, the Business Builder Academy. We've seen several new businesses open and several in the process of opening, filling in those vacant storefronts downtown. The Electric Heart has made ease of maintenance much better downtown and had staff be able to utilize that for cleaning and also help with other projects in town like the West End Ignited Project and other things. So it's benefited not just downtown, but beyond there as well. Beautification projects like the ashtrays, the doggy waste stations, which we see more and more dogs downtown, so those have been great to add there. And really, we've had four years of the funding since it started five years ago, and excited to keep moving it forward the next seven years and really see those funds continue to grow and use them for more things.
Holly, could you, or maybe Fred, either one of you, since some people might not be aware of what the Business Builder Academy is all about, I think it's an awesome program that you guys got started last year. Can you just briefly let the public know a little bit about what the purpose of that program is?
Sure. So one of the big things at Main Street is kind of just even further back, because we've done a lot of design work downtown and beginning the facade, fixed up, and some people living upstairs in apartments. The big concern has always been, you know, we have to leave it so far, so how do we increase, find those businesses to occupy those places? We've done a few business recruitment trainings through Main Street Iowa, but I always thought, you know, the businesses that open up, the small businesses downtown Etumwa are right here in Etumwa. So we started our Business Builder Academy two years ago. We've had 15 business ideas graduate from that program. We've seen four new businesses open up, not all within the Main Street district, but three of those are within the Main Street district, we've seen a few buildings rehabbed. And I think that's really great for just two years of the project, and we're having conversations about doing that twice a year instead of just once a year. Currently, we do that September, but we usually have some grant money, which comes from SMIT to do that, to help those new businesses start out. So we've given out about $10,000 so far in grant dollars to help those businesses start out. I will just add, there's been a tremendous amount of improvement downtown. A few years ago, we did street skate, and that was a tremendous gift to all the property owners downtown, it didn't cost them anything, and it was all paid for by the city, the Water Works and Legacy Foundation. That is kind of what helped us push SMIT through, and it was the businesses and property owners that says, saying thank you and wanting to help support that in the future, realizing the cost of the landscape itself and how we do that and curb repair and things like that. So a big section of the SMIT money is set aside for maintenance issues. We have replaced several of the trees that didn't make it, that happens in E W 103, there's a chance it's gonna die, and so we've replaced a few trees. We've helped with some of the curb repair, as Holly mentioned, we did, we built one and plan on helping with a couple more dumpster enclosures for businesses that don't necessarily have the best places for cheap dumpsters, so kind of makes the whole my credit, we got a nice neat spot to hide that stuff. It's been a great success so far, and just getting it started, so we hope that it continues for another seven years and see some more big improvements. The cool thing is, is that it's voted on by the businesses downtown, property owners downtown, and it has, the money has to stay within the district, so that's kind of the one way I'm trying to make.
One of the things that I really think is unique about the Business Builder Academy is you can help grow your own. A lot of people that want to start new businesses don't have any clue about what do I need to know to start my own business? How do you write a business plan? What kinds of things do I need to look at to be successful? And this Business Builder Academy, I know, really addresses a lot of those things.
It's kind of a business basics class, and you come out of that with a business plan, and you get to meet some great mentors along the way that are all local people too, mentors that have started businesses, also bankers, insurance agents, this stuff, it's a, it's a great, cool thing.
Lindsay's done a phenomenal job with it, yeah.
Brandon or Holly, I think it would be nice, in your next presentation, if you could name some of the new startups, so we kind of know by name who they are.
So Bryce Lica has renovated a couple of buildings downtown. Here is the barber shop.
Langland.
Langland.
No, Encaded Barber Shop.
Encaded Barber Shop, the two businesses in one of those buildings. Bryce is just getting ready to open his new businesses this next spring. It's going to be kind of an entertainment venue for the community. We have Erin Mailer, who opened up here in Cross on Court Street, and she is a paper conservator.
And she wanted an award, too.
She did. She got an Open for Business Award last year. She won an additional 15,000 dollars to improve that business. And one of the cool things about her business is, so she's got a draw, she's got clients not only locally, but across the state and other states, so she's drawing people in from outside of Iowa. And then we had Tucker Blyak last year, who opened up a fitness CrossFit studio out on North Court Street, so not in the district, but opened a new business there, and he is actually in the midst of expanding his business, so that's awesome. And then this year, we had some great people, we had a bakery that I think might be ready for a spot here in a few months, and Zach and Kristen, of course, are graduates, and they have a business that will be opening up hopefully yet this fall, so.
And then the food, there's a food truck, too.
Yep, and a food truck, Papa Zach's.
Zach's.
Papa Zach's.
Zach's.
Food truck, well, they have it going, and they know that they're going to be setting up a lady's night out by the spring, so we, I think it's great.
That's very informative, thank you.
Does council have any other questions? If not, has anybody in the audience had any questions or comments they'd like to make regarding the SMIT district or what's happening in downtown Etumwa? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 56, 2024, authorizing an ordinance for the re-establishment and continuance of the downtown Etumwa self-supported municipal improvement district. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 56, 2024.
Move their recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thanks, Zach. We do have one ordinance tonight.
Ordinance number 3223, 2024, amending the municipal code of the city of Etumwa, Iowa by amending section 31-14A entitled Fees and Charges Costs. Recommendation, pass the second consideration of ordinance number 3223, 2024.
Move their recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phil. So as mentioned, this is the second consideration, was first approved or read and approved at the February 6 meeting. Just for quick clarification, the, we're working with Piper Sandler Financial Modeling for the Phase 8 work. Part of that discussion was that Fund 613 sewer improvement fund, and the fund has very specific language establishing it, and saying it can only be used for future treatment plan projects, and we're looking at trying to expand that. The current language would prevent the use of funds in the current upcoming sewer projects, so additional language is being recommended to allow money in that improvement fund to utilize and benefit the entire sewer system, not just the treatment plan. Again, this is the second reading, the first one did get approved and moved to here.
Council have any questions for Phil regarding this ordinance? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
We have no departmental board or commission recommendations for reports tonight, so we'll move to resolutions.
Resolution number 28, 2024, approving and authorizing purchase of certain real property and authorizing execution of a real estate purchase agreement with Iowa State Bank and Trust Company of Fairfield, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 28, 2024.
Move their recommendation.
Second. Okay, Mr. Burkmire.
He's back again. Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. So this parcel is required in order to construct the roundabout that we talked about earlier. Iowa State Bank and Trust owns this piece of property right here, and this area in green is what we intend to purchase. We based it off of recent sales in the area. It came out to roughly $1.60 a square foot to acquire. Iowa State Bank and Trust has signed off on this, and so the total amount was $1,800 for that, that piece of property.
Council have any questions for Phil?
Did you say something else?
No.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 29, 2024, approving and authorizing purchase of certain real property and authorizing execution of a real estate purchase agreement with Rodney Burns. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 29, 2024.
Move their recommendation.
Second. Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So this purchase is for 325 square feet right on this corner down here. It's the outlet for the storm sewer. Goes through that property, and rather than getting a permanent easement for it, is purchased the property because we own that big red piece on the other side of it now, so why have to deal with an easement? Same, same process, roughly $1.60 a square foot, I'm sorry, it was 193 square feet, 325 dollars, I said 325 square feet. So 193 square feet, 325 dollars, roughly $1.60 a square foot. Again, it's based off a recent purchase, the prices in the area.
Council have any questions for Phil?
And he signed off on that?
Yes. The property owners have signed up on all these easements and all these properties, they've already been signed off, so.
There's no other questions, comments? Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 33, 2024, authorizing the mayor to execute two permanent easements and four temporary construction easement agreements for the construction and maintenance of the Albia Road and Quincy Avenue Roundabout Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 33, 2024.
Come on, Keith.
Move their recommendation.
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Burkmire.
Thank you, Mayor. So like I said, this is two permanent easements, two permanent easements and four temporarys. I'll just point them out real quick, the two areas in blue here are the permanent easements, and those are going to be for utilities. We have some utilities that are moving out of the redway, electric and stuff, so those will be for the utilities. The yellow here, 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 and here are temporary ones to direct construction, once construction's over, those will go away and that goes back to the property owner. No money directly changing hands for any of these easements. We are extending, like, sewer laterals into the property to achieve permanent easements, and we're adding a driveway for the, the one on the north, so, which is already a curb growth, so most of the stuff we've done, you know, it's, it's like a servicing time, so during the project, we'll put this stuff in there, and we don't have to direct and pay for any money. And the temporary easements, what we normally do is it's a benefit to the property owner to have the roundabout there and have the improved access to their property, so since we're going to restore the property to like new when we finish the project, there's really no impact to the property owner, so those are just kind of a, you know, there's no money changing hands for those either.
And there's really only one business that will be affected anyway, correct?
Yeah, we'll maintain access to all the businesses during the project, and they'll have a, you know, on the south side, they'll have a, the most direct impact will be to them, but they'll have access to their property the whole time.
But if I remember right from discussions last year, when the roundabout starts getting built, there won't be traffic, meaning it would go up and down Quincy, correct?
It's phased in, so we're going to try to keep as much open as possible. Sometimes you don't want to be able to turn left, or you don't want to be able to turn right, but we're going to try to keep as much open. There's three different phases, actually, they don't form during the, during the public hearing, but we're printing it off here for you, but there's, it's going to be phased, so we're trying to maintain the most access we can.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, Phil.
Resolution number forty-four, twenty twenty-four, waiving building permit fees for the Atomoa Sports Complex project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number forty-four, twenty twenty-four.
What was the recommendation? Okay, Mr. Simonson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The Atomoa Sports Commission's proposed to instruct a sixteen thousand square foot indoor athletics complex in Sycamore Park. The council's previously allocated funds to the project, and the city is also a co-applicant on the project, successful destination Iowa grant application. Because the project's in a city park and because the city's a funding partner, staff recommends waiving the fees. That's consistent with other projects we've done in the past. If a building permit were to be issued and a fee were to be charged, it'd be forty-two thousand dollars about for the fee based on the valuation. Brian Morgan's here with the Sports Commission. He's gonna give an update on that project this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Cal, come on, Cavaness. Please don't make fun of my hair. Been a long day.
Please don't make fun of the backup. We got to make the recommendation.
Just be glad you have some.
Well, I wanna thank everyone for, for having us back here tonight and hearing this request. We do have some good news. We opened bids last night on the building. We got the quotes back for all the mechanical, construction side things. And then have a pretty close estimate on the sports package and kitchen package, which for all intents and purposes builds the building, opens the doors. And we got a very favorable bid back. Voorhees, Shouse Voorhees out of Fairfield was the winning bidder on that, so still somewhat local, local entity that'll be putting the building up itself. We've been working with Chris for contracting as our general, our general guy on that. Those bids come back in at two point eight million for the building. We, we were looking at about three point seven here not too long ago. So what all that says is we're able to build it for just a shade over ten million dollars. We have committed funds of just over ten point seven million dollars. So with your support, and I guess now would be the time, I'd like to invite all you for a groundbreaking on that spot, March eighteenth at ten AM. So this has been a five to six year process. We started with the, with the study in the area, and I believe it was two thousand and eighteen. That got done toward the end of that year, and we kinda threw a committee together in two thousand and nineteen. And COVID happened along with a lot of other things. And again, support from the county, legacy foundations, city. School District is all funding partners and partners in this project. And with that, on outside monies, we've been able to raise right around two million dollars thus far. We still have a little bit we'd like to do to make sure the success of it, you know, upon opening. But the city, for those of you that weren't here, the city had agreed to a seven hundred thousand dollar partnership in this along with two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand in kind. And we consider this as part of the in-kind money that the city would, would do. So I say that to say, for all those things that we've dangled carrots or it's been talked about, and I always use for Atomoa, we have a huge, huge case of hope fatigue. We get our hopes up. We think this is gonna happen, and then it doesn't. We're very confident now. We're saying shovels are going in the ground, and I think this is gonna be a great thing for Atomoa, Waplo County, and all southeastside.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job.
You know, cake and groundbreaking, that's my birthday, actually.
Look, look at me, Rick. Well, it's funny, my birthday was, my birthday was yesterday, so that's where I was, I was blowing out candles all day, hoping for a good, favorable day. It was. Are we birthday twins?
Friends!
All right. Yeah, so, no, it was, it was a good day yesterday. It was almost surreal, you know, with anyone that's went through any, anything with this, building this building, to anything else. You're always kinda waiting on the next shoe to drop or whatever it is. So it was definitely a surreal feeling last night and yesterday. But a huge wait, and I'm excited for, for all of us, excited for our community.
Could be a repeat changer for Atomoa.
I agree. Thank you.
Any questions from council for Brian Morgan? If not, thank you, Brian.
Thank you for your time.
Zach, anything else?
No, thank you, Brian.
Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-five, twenty twenty-four, approving new lab and hallway speeds for water pollution control facility. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number fifty-five, twenty twenty-four.
What was the recommendation?
Second.
John Lloyd is gonna take this one.
Uh, may I ask, council? Section thirty-one, fourteen, B nine of this code that authorizes this council to set fees for laboratory waste and waste hauler dumping by resolution. And that's exactly what this is. This has nothing to do with residential rights. I want to make that clear. You've gone through pH, dissolved oxygen, because I know you like these acronyms, if you wanna know what they are.
I appreciate that.
Biochemical oxygen, oxygen demand, carbonaceous biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids, mixed liquor suspended solids. Total solids, ammonia, E. coli, and fecal coliform are ones that we are looking at increasing marginally. Three dollars for the first four, two dollars for the next three. No change for ammonia, E. coli, or fecal. We do wanna take out the alkaline, chlorine, bricks, sour conductivity, and volatile acids, because those are kinda time sensitive. We, and we actually looked up, and we didn't have anybody that wanted any of those tests on. We go in internally for our own use. Total, N total P and TKN, we do send some of those off for some of our customers. We also send those off for ourselves. We just don't have the space for the budgets to run those. And so when we do send those off, I wanna make sure that we're sending those off at market rates, because we're not really getting any money off of those.
So.
Please think of your costs.
Yes. And the ones that we're taking off, again, we're just not doing those for any customers, so.
Council, have any questions for John? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, John. That concludes the resolutions. So the next item is, does the council have any report or communication? Oh, no, I see it before, I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda is where I ask the public if they wanna speak on any non-agenda items tonight that's not on our agenda. Okay. And then the next item is, mayor or city council reports or any communications? Does anybody on the council have any communications that they'd like to give to the public?
Yeah, I do have a couple.
Okay, Cyan.
The first is that the next council meeting, I will not be in attendance. We have various future conferences, so I will need to go to those instead. And then the second is, thank you, Keith. The second is the Historic Preservation Committee is having a community workshop on March seventh from six to eight at Hotel Atomoa. And we would love to see lots of people in attendance and talk about how we can continue to restore the historic aspects of our community.
And if anyone needs a reminder card for that, I have something.
Would love to hand you some flyers.
It is really important that we do get some good community input on the city's historical preservation strategic plans. So I really hope we'll have a lot of people come out and give some input regarding what Atomoa needs to be looking at doing in the future regarding historic preservation. So I really appreciate Cyan for bringing that out. Any other announcements from council tonight?
Yes, so a little bit of fun. Next Thursday is weekday, in case y'all didn't know. And Main Street is having a bonus day bonanza, and it's a scavenger hunt. It's free to sign up. It's from four to six, and it's gonna be a great time. So like, get some people, get some people on your team, on your, that you work with together, go down, have some fun. And you can sign up at the, sorry, Chris, Main Street website. Thank you.
Any other announcements from council?
I'm sorry.
No? Okay, are we gonna go into that last item briefly? Do you wanna go ahead and? We're gonna have a brief continuing discussion of the city's finances for the FY twenty-five fiscal year. Even though Jessica Kinsler, our interim finance director, is not here tonight, I think Phil wanted to just briefly mention a couple of these things. It's just for information purposes. The council's not being asked to approve or vote on anything tonight.
So I was gonna cover the first couple here, the enterprise funds and the golf course fund, and then I believe Barb Kojo was gonna handle the internal service funds. So I think at the last work session last week, Jessica mentioned, and I'm just wrapping up here. So the enterprise funds, landfill, landfill reserve, recycling, they're included in the packet here. There's not a lot for me to necessarily go over. These are being presented, but the Solid Waste Commission, made up of the city council and the county, will have to actually approve these budgets. And then once that's approved, they'll be incorporated in. This is more just for transparency purposes and for that complete budget picture that everyone can be aware. These funds, six seventy, six seventy-one, six seventy-three, will be incorporated into our full budget. They are standalone, they are separate, and they are controlled by the joint entity of the city council and the county, Waplo County. So I don't know if there's any questions specifically about this. Again, this lays out projections based off of what staff is presenting. And then the joint entity will verify or validate the budget, I believe on Thursday. It's, it'll be brought up and potentially approved at that point, and it will be incorporated in. So that's six seventy, six seventy-one, and six seventy-three. And Fund Seven Fifty is the golf course fund. This is another one of those where we don't have a lot to do with. Remember, we just recently approved an updated contract, operating contract with Adam Wilson. And so really what this is looking at is the revenue we would anticipate from that. We have the sixteen thousand dollar rental income for the year. That was part of that RFP. And it's estimated twenty-two thousand dollars. That's a dollar per round for, for golf terms. And so that'd be a little additional revenue there, looking at thirty-eight thousand. And then in there for expenses, currently we have property insurance, general liability insurance. This is also where we have any capital improvements that we requested of the city to contribute towards what we need with that. So again, it's pretty straightforward, revenue in and expense out. And again, just to paint that full picture of our overall budget. I don't think any questions on that.
Council, have any questions for Phil regarding any of those funds?
Then I would turn it over to Barb to speak about the internal service funds. And like Jessica mentioned, these aren't ones that are specifically budgeted. They're incorporated in because they're kinda going around in the background. But we're not doubling up and charging this twice in, in that regard. So this is more for informational purposes and to, again, help paint that picture.
So the information that I just handed out to you, where it says that what was originally in your packet, there's just some more information on the, what I have just given to you. So our self-insurance funds, what this is, is as a city, we are considered self-insured. And essentially, when, like, we are the insurer. So when our employees, whenever we go to the doctor, we are the ones who pay that. It is not going through anyone else. It goes through us. So the thing is, is it does require a higher level of accounting and oversight by the city, but it does put us in control of our plan and our costs. A few years back, we had contracted out with Mark J. Becker and Associates, which is now bought by Gallagher. And so Gallagher is our third-party benefits administrator. And what they do is they are constantly monitoring our insurances. They are there if we have any concerns or any questions, anything that comes up. And they are always looking for ways that they can not only save us money, but provide better services to our employees. So the other thing that the city does have is we have what we call a stop-loss policy. And what that is, is that for essentially any cost, we are insured up to every individual, that every covered individual up to a hundred thousand dollars. So if somebody goes to the doctor, say that there's some catastrophic event or an accident, the city is on the hook for the first one hundred thousand dollars of that. After that, it goes through our stop-loss policy. And so based on different percentages of however much that is, certain amounts are covered by that. So if there's two hundred thousand dollars in hospital bills, then it's the first hundred thousand we pay, and then the stop-loss policy kicks in. So with, for FY twenty-five, we are projecting that our costs are going to stay the same as our FY twenty-four levels, and that is what the chart is. This is the new information. That was not in your packet previously. So essentially what it is, is we set the premiums, and we say as a city that based on the different coverages that we have, our monthly premium, just as an example, for a single employee, if it's just single coverage, it's eight hundred and ninety-one dollars a month. That's what Blue Cross Blue Shield Walmart has come back and said that's what it's going to cost for your coverage. As a city, we pay ninety percent of that, and we pass ten percent on of that cost to our employees. So you'll see in there that the employer cost is ninety percent of the premium. So the city for a single coverage pays eight hundred and one dollars per month, where the employee pays eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. And so you can see that for medical, for our dental coverage, the city does pay completely for medical cover, or for dental coverage for our employee. And then anything above or beyond that, the employer, the employee does pay. For vision, the employee, the employer does not have any participation in that. We do not put any funds towards that. That's completely paid by the employee. But again, with all of the other, that's just an offering that we have. That's part of the benefit packet. One thing to note, 'cause you'll see here on some of the different funds, you will see that there is a retiree insurance. So any employee that was hired prior to February twenty-second of nineteen ninety-three, they are entitled to remain covered under our insurance benefits upon their retirement from the city. For the employees that were hired after ninety-three, they are eligible to maintain the coverage, but they are responsible for one hundred percent of the payment. So if an employee was hired prior to that nineteen ninety-three, they are going to stay on our insurance, on our insurance plan. And they pay a reduced percentage rather than paying the entire thing. The other thing with that last part of it for employees hired after nineteen ninety-three, Iowa code does state that we are to offer our, any employee, coverage up to age sixty-five, to when they are eligible to go on Medicare. So there are different funds that are here. We do have eight sixty, which is our group health insurance. This is for medical. This is for prescription drugs. This is for essentially anything that is provided for our medical insurance. Let's see, eight sixty-one is our post-sixty-five retiree insurance. Again, this is where we changed over to Humana a few years ago. And Humana is what takes care of our post-sixty-five retiree insurance. Those are for those employees that were employed with the city prior to nineteen ninety-three. Eight sixty-two is our dental insurance. There's no stop-loss policies for dental insurance. So again, if any of those claims that come in, the city is on the hook for paying for those. And then eight sixty-three for our life insurance. One of the things that we do offer as part of our benefit plan is that for any regular full-time employee, the city does pay for a life insurance plan up to their annual salary capped at a hundred thousand dollars. So there are also other options that the employee can purchase supplemental coverages for their families, for themselves, for their children. And that is paid completely by the employee, not by us. Jessica kinda adds in here, these funds operate in the background. They're not recorded on the state budget forms. So when an employee receives a paycheck, we withhold a, an amount for the portion of the insurance based on whatever their elections are. We withhold that, that amount back. And then the city also has line items in each budget where there are employee expenses for group health insurance. This is something that we do forecast out. We have that information. It is included in the budget based upon current elections of what our employees do elect. The account gets charged, the city share for each employee for each payroll. The employer and employee contributions then get credited. The employer and employee contributions then get credited to that account as a revenue. And we have made a couple of changes in here. So in the prior years, that had always gone into one specific account as a transfer in. And in order to have a transfer in, you have to have a transfer out. So we're essentially doubling up on expenses within that. So one of the things that Jessica has done, Jessica and Sarah have done, is that they've set up some line items just to better classify some of the revenues and the expenses.
On the life insurance that the city provides to full-time employees, is that only effective while they're working for the city, or does that continue after they've retired?
It is, it, so the nineteen ninety-three, the nineteen ninety-three, if they were hired prior to nineteen ninety-three, the city does pay for a four thousand dollar policy for life insurance. If you are hired after nineteen ninety-three, you may elect to continue that coverage, but the city does not pay for that.
So they can continue that after retirement if they choose to?
If they choose to, yes. The city goes directly through Sumatra. The city does not do anything with that. But yes, we do have a handful of our retirees that there is, they do have a four thousand dollar life insurance plan that the city does pay for.
Does the council have any questions for Barb regarding any of the internal service funds? Like I said, they're not asking for council action about this. It's just for your information. Thank you, Barb. Okay, if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's city council meeting.
What was our recommendation?
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you everybody for attending our city. Now for me to do my own.